I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If we could take the roll call, please?
Commissioner Cadweldon?
Yep.
Commissioner Cardy?
Here.
Commissioner Zanstra?
Here.
Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
Commissioner Salaswido?
Here.
And Chair Hamley?
Here. And then moving on to the approval of the agenda, which I assume you all got your back at?
Mm-hmm. Well, should approve.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. All those for yes?
Yes.
All those for no? Upstays, and that's approved. And then the minutes, looking for approval of the minutes from the last meeting? Or the last gathering and meetings?
I seconded.
All those for yes?
Yes.
All those for no? Any upstays? Also unanimous? Then we'd like to open the meeting for public comments and communications concerning items not on the agenda?
They're not running up here.
Okay, alright, alright. And so then we can close that and move on to old business, which there's none. Anybody think of anything? Okay. And then new business, the fun stuff. The redevelopment of the liquor license approval process, which everyone received. Mark, did you have something about that?
I can't. This is the step-by-step process that we would go through as staff to make a recommendation to the council on whether or not they would recommend or not recommend a development of liquor licenses with the Control Commission. As I covered this with the council and covered it with the Downtown Development Authority, one of the issues was that perhaps we provide notice to the members of the DDA and members of the Planning Commission that this, an application for a license was progressing through the process. And so you'll see under number five where that notice would appear in the process. And that would be at about the same time that the police, one of the steps in the process is the police department has to do an investigation. And so as they're starting their investigation, they would also, we'd also provide notice so that you can, if you want to give some input to the police department or ultimately want to attend a council meeting, then you can do that. I can go through the entire process if you'd like me to.
Well, that's all we're changing, is that couple of steps in there?
That's all we added since I brought it to the, to the DDA and the council. But this is actually something that we generated from the beginning because there never was a written process in place. And we processed a license and there was some concern over, you know, who should that have gone to and should there have been some DDA input? And all those kinds of questions came up. And there never was a written process in place. And so we developed a written process to make it clear what the steps would be. And so now we're talking with all of the boards and commissions and council board involved.
So this is recently put together, this written process?
Yes, yes.
And this is not something we approve or decline, it's something that we're just being notified about?
Just being notified about, you know, we'll take your input on it. You know, again, this is a, there's a lot of staff work that goes on behind the scenes relating to these licenses. And so this is just outlining all the staff work that goes on behind the scenes.
And for those that weren't here, I think there's were two types of liquor licenses and this pertains to the specific one only.
To the development of the licenses, yeah.
So this is, I just had a question about the $75,000 under item three. So I'm going to rehabilitate a building. I'm saying I'm going to put in 75,000, but halfway I lose it. That license I cannot sell or transfer to anyone else.
Correct. Developmental licenses are restricted to the business and the location.
Okay.
So for example, the, you know, one we just approved was Main Street Barbecue. If that business closed down and another business wanted to locate there, they'd have to go through the process all over again. Or if Main Street Barbecue wanted to move to another building, they'd have to go through the process all over again.
And if somebody wanted that, they'd have to put another 75,000 into that space?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Where does that amount come from?
State law requirement. Basically, what you're seeing at the beginning are, we go through a process, and there's one here I should outline for you, but number three are just the state law requirements that we built into our process just to, you know, make sure that the license complies with the provisions of state law. And then number four is all of the steps at the local level. And one of those steps is that, you know, we assure that the requested use permitted by right within the district that it's proposed to be located, that it's supported by the master plan and the DDA Development and the other licensing companies. So four is all those sort of local level requirements. And this is probably a good time to interject that. One of the policy discussions that I see coming that you should be involved in is there's a question about how many developmental licenses will we allow within the city of Moore? And theoretically, right now, the state law says that a district, which would be the DDA district, is eligible for one license for every 200,000 of public and private investment over the last five years. With the King Milling investment alone, we potentially could have 55 licenses in downtown Moore. I don't think we're going to have 55, but you know, there's a, there's a policy discussion about is there a cap, should there be a cap? Some people would say that there shouldn't be, let private enterprise determine that. Some would say maybe there should be a cap because you have different licenses that may be competing with each other. You have the Class C licenses and developmental licenses. There are also brewing licenses and a number of others. And so that policy debate should occur at the local level on should there be a cap or not.
So will that be us?
I think that you should be involved in that, yes, yes. Because if, if the, I believe the best way to handle it, if there were going to be a cap, would be to do it through zoning, through the zoning ordinance and perhaps through segment review. Although it could be just a, just a code, it could be a, you know, within a quarter million licenses. We could go either route. But if we're going to run it as an amendment to the zoning ordinance, then in a certain way, you're involved.
So it's five years that stays on the books and after five years, whatever they invested in King Milling goes away?
Yes.
And you'd have to have the next two or three?
And so it's kind of like a rolling five years. And that's where the step that talks about the assessor creating an affidavit, that affidavit is what, where the assessor determines how much public and private investment has occurred within the DDA district within the last five years. So that's what that affidavit does. And remember, we're talking about public and private investments.
Right.
So for example, we just invested about a quarter million dollars into the street utility.
I was going to ask you, street utilities, all that accounts.
There's one license right there.
Yeah.
And number seven is that, I mean, that's speaking to the different kinds of licenses, I think, but is that an appropriate use of resources?
That's a step we added at the request of not only those liquor license holders, but the planning request of some council members. And we had a discussion with the police department, will do that? And the police department said, yeah, we don't, you know, see, there's only, I think, four of them, you know, Class C license holders and then the developmental license holders. So it's an easy notice to provide.
Until we have 55?
Yeah.
Until we have 55 or, you know, it opens, this is the discussion that we had before. It opens this Pandora's box of, okay, how much notice, you know, we're going to do this on liquor licenses now. You know, how much notice are we going to provide on which issues? And, you know, how far do we go with that?
Is this unique to liquor license or other other like, the notification, I guess? What's the reasoning behind that? You know, what was the purpose behind?
Well, what is the outcome, right?
Right.
What should we tell everybody? Okay, we don't care what you say, but now you know.
Yeah, the, I mean, the, I guess the issue is, if I'm going to look at it from that perspective, the issue is going to be transparency and it's going to be that if I have this Class C license, then I would like to know that the councils are going to be considering a developmental license so that I could at least voice my concern that that may devalue, devalue the value of my Class C license.
Your business, because it would take away on yours, right?
Yeah.
It's got a lot of noise and have competition.
Exactly, that's kind of what it seems like. It's kind of like no one's coming.
My take on that, we get called NAPA or AutoZone when O'Reilly's or.
That was, yeah.
They count too, so I mean, it's, it's what's that gray line? It's who do you notify and why, then why? You know? Because then you're going to get, anytime some competitor comes in, you're probably not going to have an open, warm, fuzzy feeling.
Exactly.
Hey, they're here, you know? So you're, if, you're, it's a no-win situation.
If this is.
This is transparent all the way, you know?
Is this somewhere else? Like when you give a liquor license, can you find out somewhere else? Is it, you know, is it on some public record or something that if you went to look for it, you could find it?
Um, when, I'm only going to guess at the answer, but after the license has been issued, I would imagine that there's a website with the Liquor Control Commission. But before license is issued, your notice of that is going to be the notice of the City Council through agenda and that the agenda, agenda, you know?
I guess I just take, you know, I, number seven seems redundant to me perhaps, or.
Unnecessary.
Unnecessary. That's a better word, I think.
It does potentially open Pandora's box, but I guess, you know, we, we thought about it and are keeping our fingers crossed that it doesn't open up Pandora's box.
Okay. Questions, comments? Don't vote on that one, right?
Nope.
Alright. And then moving on to B, discussion of potential zoning and ordinance changes. There's not a paper on this one, right?
That's.
Or is that the, the memory of them?
That's the planning commission goals priorities.
Okay.
And kind of like we did, was it about this time last year? We came to you and we said, okay, here's the list, here's the master list. Now, you know, what are the one or two or three things that you want us to focus on? And I think, you know, out of that was what came, mixed use and maybe the administrative approvals and a couple of things that we worked on. And so we're looking for the same thing again. We know that we have some things coming up that we'll be talking about later in your agenda. We know, we know we have mining coming up and dealing with the whole issue of mining. We know we have brew pubs and issuing with the, dealing with the whole issue of brew pubs. So we know those are coming, we know those are coming on the horizon, but if there's anything else or any that you think that we ought to start gearing up for staff and that's, we're looking for your direction on that.
Are there some that are planning to move into brew pubs?
Yes, yes. We have a letter of interest from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for, in the Superior Precision Building.
Oh, wow.
The developer has, he gave a commitment from the bank and now we have a somewhat of interest, it's not commitment yet, but from the MEDC to provide over, well, over 200,000 dollars in grant that actually would come through the city and help with the development of that brew pub. So that was one of the big missing pieces of the puzzle. Now it's just a matter of, you know, going through all those steps that they're going to need to go through to rehab and build it and eventually move to a rebuild there.
Do we have say over, what kind of beer?
There, we can ask for a tasting.
Alright.
If that's something that you're interested in, they might want to do that on the same night that you're, maybe I should make that. That's your idea?
That's right. It's how it looks good now.
You didn't even do a field, field test.
Yeah.
So when was the last time the master plan was updated or reviewed? Um, it has been, I'm going to guess, six to seven years. The statute says that you have to look at it every five years and make a determination. And Andy might know that, or at least maybe he's looking it up.
He did that one, the first year I was on there, we looked at.
Every five years, you have to make a determination as to whether or not it needs to be updated. And you did that. Mary Alene walked us through that one while she was still here. So that's been done, but another, let's say, two, three years, you're going to have to make the determination again.
I think at that time, you gave us a three-ring binder of the master plan. And I'm not sure if all council members have that today, wasn't that what?
Does everybody have the master plan?
I still have it.
Okay.
But we've had some new.
Is that the master plan? No, that's the plan of the commission rules.
I don't have that.
The ordinances and stuff.
It works like this. I have the order that's being ordered.
We don't have that.
No.
Sorry, I don't know who to respond to now.
That's always right. We're all excited.
The big three-ring binder is the code of ordinances?
Yes.
Okay. And, and some of you may have that, some of you may not. We don't, we don't get printed, that was one of our cost-cutting measures, where we don't get printed versions from the code anymore. It's all on the website. Certainly, if you want us to print off a section, we'd be happy to do that for you. But with those binders, you know, when something's updated, then we've got to figure out who has binders and all that updating. And so it becomes a little bit of an administrative headache for us. But the master plan itself is a bound document that's about this thick. And we can make a no, and I'll just bring a stack to the next meeting. We still have quite a big box of copies of the master plan. I'll just bring a stack to the next meeting and if you don't, just check and see if you have one. If you don't.
Is it possible soon to put it in our folder so I can start viewing it before the next meeting?
Sure.
Maybe we won't discuss it, but at least it would be in there.
Mm-hmm. Andy, can you think of anything else that we should be kind of forward-thinking on?
One thing on the list, and I don't know how critical it is to get into it right away, but there was a federal Supreme Court decision this past summer that relates to signs. I know that we did just overhaul the sign ordinance maybe two or three years ago and there are some. I think we will have to make some adjustments based on that. I don't know that it's a dire thing that we do as long as from an administrative standpoint, we handle things correctly. But that's something that we could consider. If you wanted to jump back into that conversation again, I don't know if you want to or not, because signs can be frustrating. Otherwise, I can't think of anything off the top of my head that's really critical other than what we'll be talking about tonight. And the next item on the agenda, there is a really important issue there in zoning that I would like to get corrected. But beyond that, I can't think of anything that really is, you know, at the top of my mind.
The sign has more content than actual physical size or anything like that.
Right, yeah. So what the Supreme Court decided in this particular case was that anything, is it, you can't regulate a sign based on the content of the sign. So if, and I went to a couple of seminars on this at the Michigan Association of Planning Conference back in early October. And the sort of rule of thumb that they gave us was if you actually have to read the words on the sign to determine what sort of sign it is and then how to regulate it, then you're regulating based on content. And then that makes it a, you know, unnecessary regulation or restriction of speech, which obviously is not constitutional. So again, I know there are content-based provisions in the sign, in the ordinance when we talk about political signs, real estate signs. There's probably some others that the only way you would know that something is a political sign is because it says, you know, whatever Obama, Biden, or Donald Trump, or whatever on the sign itself. That's the only way you know what kind of sign it is. Same thing with a real estate sign that advertises like a property for sale. The only reason you know what kind of sign it is because of what the words are on it. Now, if we apply common sense to most of these decisions and we're careful, even without admitting the ordinance, just through the administrative process and being smart with the way that things are enforced, I don't think that we're going to have any problems. But obviously, I'm not going to, you know, want to recommend having a, an ordinance on the books that is in violation of some Supreme Court decision either. So that's one thing to think about. Again, I don't know that it raises, at this point, it's not risen to the level of being something that's in dire straits, but that's kind of the background on what it is. And it's just a matter of being careful how we deal with regulating the content of signs and what words are on them and things like that.
Okay. One that's, one that's on the list here that is kind of a hanging fruit is the hard surface, what is considered hard surface. And that's, that's an issue that's been hanging out there for a couple of years. It's basically, parking lot has to be, there's a requirement, parking lot has to be asphalt or other surfaces approved by the planning commission. And our thought was to bring some perhaps specifications to you for crushed asphalt and crushed concrete to see if, because those have been approved. And so maybe to bring some very specific specifications that they, you know, those two types of surfaces might be and see what your thoughts are on that. That's a low-hanging fruit one that maybe we'll just work on in some way to. But mining is big.
What about reviewing our floodplain now? Will we do that? As commissioners or?
The, well, the actual, and what we noticed had amended, the actual boundaries of the floodplain itself isn't dictated by us. That comes from the federal insurance or FEMA. Yeah, FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program. They actually determine what these exact boundaries of the 105-year floodplain is or are. But how we choose to deal with properties within the floodplain through zoning is something that we can have some say over. And that's part of what I want to take into later because there is. But I view to be a significant issue with the map and the text that we need to rectify sooner rather than later.
Anything else? Okay. Moving on to C, zoning changes for Grand Rapids gravel. I guess, Andy, you want to listen on this?
Yes, so as you guys, I think you all know, there's a property, it's in the very southwest corner of the city. 2104 Bose is the address. It's owned by Grand Rapids gravel and they've expressed some interest in at some point actually mining the property, which is fine. But there are a number of things that are sort of getting in the way of that. And I think Mark has got a map up on the screen. So if you see here on the map, there's a fairly large parcel that is right here. It basically butts up against the park on, on the east there. So it's a fairly large piece that goes from Bose all the way down to the river. And then there's a couple of parcels that are on that that are sort of cut out. But I don't know if they own all those little ones too or not, but to this, the discussion is sort of immaterial. And so the issue here, well, there are, there are several issues. And the one that I alluded to earlier about, about the floodplain map and everything else is that within the city's zoning ordinance, there is language for a floodplain district. It's, it's titled as if it was a just regular zoning district like the R1 or R2 or C2 or McKeese or whatever. But when you read the text of the ordinance, it calls it an overlay that, "and the boundaries of this zone or overlay shall coincide with the boundaries of the area as indicated as the ones of the 100-year flood." And so as you can see, the area there, light blue on the map, that's the floodplain district on this parcel. And it clearly is not the same as what the actual 100-year floodplain, which is everything there in that Zone A of 11. Zone B is the 500-year floodplain, which is not a part of that overlay. So I mean, clearly, the zoning map is not accurate in terms of what the actual location of that floodplain is. It doesn't illustrate that accurately. And furthermore, and what I think is actually the largest problem is that because the ordinance describes the floodplain district as an overlay that necessarily then suggests that there is some underlying zoning district that would apply there. So typically with an overlay, we often see overlays along like a main commercial corridor or something where you have the set of conventional zoning regulations and then those are supplemented by whatever additional standards are necessary that the overlay provides. So the overlay is a sort of special condition that you attach to these certain properties that fit this certain criteria. In this case, the city recognizes that areas within the 100-year floodplain should maybe be subject to some special conditions because it is a police-sensitive area when there's flooding in the spring and it has been in the past as we know. So, but because this is zone, zone floodplain and it's not drawn as an overlay, we don't really know what the underlying zoning is in this case. On this property, we can guess and say, you know, light industrial or industrial there makes sense. I think that property is just some zone industrial. That could make sense, but we would have to actually rezone that property to industrial to really make that determination official because the map pretty clearly shows it as being half floodplain, half not. So with specific regard to Grand Rapids gravel, I think one of the first steps that we would need to do is actually zone that property, the entire thing, to whatever district we felt would be appropriate. The other issue that complicates this further with regard to mining is that, again, with an overlay, you have an additional set of restrictions or regulations that are generally more restrictive than what your underlying zoning is. So if you have, the underlying zoning is maybe commercial that allows a whole wide range of commercial uses, then maybe you have some sort of overlay that restricts those uses down further because of some environmental concern. In this case, in the industrial district, mining is not permitted either by right or by special land use, it's just flat out not permitted in that district. And the city mining is permitted in suburban residential and it's permitted in floodplain. So that's interesting and sort of unusual because now we have an overlay that permits something that is not otherwise permitted in the underlying district. So it's kind of backwards from the way that it should be. And that's another issue that we'll need to kind of wrestle with. How do we rectify that moving forward? One easy solution for this particular case would be if it's determined or if we rezone the entire Grand Rapids gravel property to industrial, that's fine. But then we would also have to amend the industrial district language to permit mining by special use, which would accomplish our goal here, I guess, of allowing mining. But it also would allow mining on any industrial-owned property anywhere in the entire city. And that may be a good idea, but it may not. And we talked about mining a little bit before, a couple, three months ago, and I talked about how it's sort of this preferred land use and it gets this sort of special treatment from the state because the material in the ground is where it is. You can't really regulate it like you can commercial development because commercial development can theoretically go anywhere. You can't force someone to mine for sand where there is no sand. You know, it is where it is in the ground. And so there are a few different strategies that we'd have to think about as far as how do we allow mining? Where do we allow it? And what size parcels do we allow it? Do we allow it anywhere? Do we allow it only in certain districts and all those kinds of things? So one of the issues when just now when we were talking about, you know, things to clean up and zoning or things to fix, for me, this floodplain issue is a big one. Mark, if you zoom out on the entire city zoning map, and then, so you'll see all the light blue there on either side of the park and then over also on the eastern side of the city there, south of downtown and all of that. That's all zoned floodplain, which as you can see, it sort of follows parcel lines and it doesn't really follow the natural geography of the land. Then if you flip over to the FEMA floodplain map of the whole city, you'll see that those two boundaries are not. two boundaries are not, it's the dark gray. Those two boundaries are not even remotely, I mean, it's not even in the ballpark really other than they're tied about the river. So for me, one significant thing that I would, I would like to have worked on or looked at anyways and figure out some, some solutions for is how do we, first, how do we determine or we will somehow determine and then rezone all of those properties that are zoned floodplain to some other conventional district as whatever makes sense? And then actually show the floodplain as an overlay, which I believe is, is, is what's intended by the ordinance. That's how the language is written. So some of them will be pretty simple, some of them might not. I mean, some of them we kind of know based on how the property is used. Some of them are recreational parcels, a lot of them are already zoned C or R2 or R3 maybe. The one right at the border of Bose and I think it's Hudson or something, you know, a big part of that is zoned R3, I think. I can't read it very clear. I think it's R3. Some of the parcels over to the, to the east could be something else. Yeah, R3. But there's, you know, we'll have to look, look at each one, see how it's used currently, how it should be used, what sort of, I mean, maybe they're wet all the time and they can't be used for anything, in which case, you know, we'll have to think about each one and probably have to rezone them all and then add the floodplain as, as an overlay. The other thing that, that the floodplain overlay does is, is it does in many cases add additional standards and additional regulations that might need to be looked at in greater detail. As you saw on the, on the floodplain map, the floodplain encompasses, you know, virtually all of downtown Lowell. And according to the floodplain language, the only uses that are permitted by right in the floodplain are open space uses such as farms, gardens, nurseries, nature preserves, so on and so forth. And that said, everything else would be a, would be a special land use. So if anyone were to construct any sort of new building anywhere downtown, basically, according to this, we would be looking at a special land use process even for the simplest or the, you know, the basic and straightforward of projects. And maybe that's the right thing to do, but I'm not so sure. And it certainly slows down the process that we've tried to accelerate through developing the, the mixed use district and taking a look at the downtown district to make sure that we're encouraging by a right the land uses that we want to encourage. And I think it would be worth looking at and maybe adjusting that language a little bit so that it, it still is simple and relatively not easy, but sort of removes some of the red flags or, you know, putting the fewest number of restrictions in front of things that we want to encourage down here. So back to Grand Rapids gravel real quick since that's sort of the focus of this conversation for, and got sidetracked a little bit. I think there's a couple of steps that, that we need to do. And, and the first one would be to amend the map either with specific regard to this parcel for now or deal with all of those floodplain parcels and, and rezone them to something that, that makes sense. Maybe in this case, it's just rezoning it to industrial. I think that should be the first step. Secondly, we should, and we can do this at the office, is we can draw the floodplain in appropriately so it generally follows the boundaries of the 100 year floodplain as close as possible. And so that that illustrated correctly on the map. And then eventually I'd like the city, this is a couple, three months down the line, to actually doubt a new zoning map that shows all of these things done, drawn correctly, illustrated properly and everything else. And then after that, we should amend the zoning ordinance to deal with this conflict between the overlay permitting something that's not allowed in our underlying districts so that not only in this case, but in other cases, we're sort of avoiding this kind of awkward conflict where we have, you know, somebody could look at this and say, well, I'm in the floodplain and the ordinance says that in the floodplain I can do mining. And then we say, well, yeah, but your underlying zoning is industrial and it's not allowed there, so now what? Now we're kind of stuck and it, it's this awkward situation that I think we need to, to, to rectify. So that's kind of the long and short of the conversation as it's, as it applies to Grand Rapids gravel. If you guys have any questions, I know it's a little confusing as far as overlays and different layers of regulation and standards and everything else, so.
To me, it's a lot confusing, but that's all right. I'll, I'll get it eventually. So has Grand Rapids given a timeframe when they would like to maybe consider mining? Or this is just preliminary and they're a year out or?
Because I feel like based on what Andy just said, we can't, we couldn't do anything.
Yeah, my understanding is that, I mean, they'd be less than a year probably, but I mean, they've given us a couple of different thoughts on what their timeframe is. Last we heard it was, I mean, in spring of next year probably. So knowing that this will take some time to figure out and it is a zoning change, we'd have to hold a public hearing. This will be a several month process, so we need to get on it fairly quickly so that we can keep this moving forward and actually have something in place around the spring of next year if that's when they were going to apply for any sort of mining.
Haven't they mined that in there before?
Uh, that I don't know. No?
Not in my lifetime.
No, I don't know.
Has there ever been a mining operation? Sure looks like it.
Just gravel.
Just gravel, yeah.
So I mean, it's, we're seeing requests for mining all over the place. I've been involved in two that were recently decided. There's a third one in a different community up there where there's one pending and most of that stuff is sand, but it's certainly appears to be a strong market right now. So it doesn't surprise me that they're looking to get, get moving. And that's fine, but I think that, you know, we should make sure that this thing is consistent and we don't have obvious conflicts like we have now and like we did.
Do, do we have things in the ordinance today that says, okay, whether we allow them to mine and do they have to do something back with the property and they're all setting done level?
I believe in buildable property or something.
What's that?
I don't know what we have. Property, I would hope.
I don't know what we have in our ordinance.
Yeah, we do have standards in the ordinance for mining and conforming right now. I'll give you a section there. So if they were to come in and apply, and apply tomorrow, let's say, they would presumably apply for a, for a special land use permit, which is, is what they would need. And the ordinance, we do have a dozen or so different standards that they would have to meet. So to answer your, your question, it says here that when, when it's completed and that the area has to be graded so no gradients of disturbed earth shall be deeper than this slope of three to one, layer of topsoil of equality approved by the zoning administrators will be straight over the excavator here. So I mean, they have to put it back. And ultimately, of course, what we see frequently with mining operations is, is apply for, to actually do, do the mining, which is a temporary activity that lasts for some number of years. It could be three years, it could be 15, depending on how big it is and how much they want to take out. But let's say hypothetically it's, you know, seven years maybe. A lot of them will, will submit sort of a plan for what they want to do afterwards. Sometimes it's just building single family homes. Obviously a lot of times there's added value and they can take a lake of some sort or a pond and then build homes on it and sell them as a, you know, waterfront, lakefront property type of thing. I don't know what specifically they, they want to do. Obviously the market dictates to a large degree what's feasible when the mining is complete. You know, they can say now that we want to put, you know, 50 condos in here, but in seven years when they're done, that market might be, you know, not particularly strong. There might be something else that's, you know, more profitable endeavor for them and they might decide to do that. But there are some standards for, for putting the property back in some capacity or another.
So what's the next step we need to do then? Just say we're interested in looking at these, keeping it on the agenda and moving?
Moving forward with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I guess with you guys a blessing, I mean, we'll take a look at all of this and give you some suggested districts as far as the rezoning goes. Cause with this one, we'll have to make a determination as to where it should be zoned. I'm not sure if you want to take a look at all the other floodplains on properties as well and deal with them at the same time. Cause there's a bunch of them that will have to rezone to something else first to make this all work. And then I think the floodplain overlay showing that is just a matter of illustrating it appropriately. There's not really any changing in terms of the number of regulations or anything. It's always been there, but it's not shown on the map. And then eventually, like I said, we'll have a, a new map prepared that shows this and shows all the other zoning changes that we've done over the last couple of years now. And so that we'll have a very current, very up to date, 100% accurate zoning map that we can all work with moving forward.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good to me.
Well, it can notify all the other floodplains.
And all of my offices.
All right. And then letter D, amendment, text amendment to zoning ordinance.
So this one is for, as Mark mentioned earlier, breweries. There's been some interest recently in, in brewing and making beer and selling it, either selling it at retail in sort of a brew pub type facility. Also, there's been some interest in some, in just doing the, the brewing, the brewing and then putting it in kegs or whatever, just selling it directly to restaurants. So it's not, there's not as much of a retail or restaurant food service side of it as there is with like a brew pub. And we're looking at the ordinance over the last few weeks trying to figure out if that's something that can be done under the current language. And there's really not anything that I'm comfortable with, especially for that one. I think with a brew pub, we could call that a restaurant and be okay, probably. But the other one where it's just brewing beer, putting it in kegs or cans or bottles or whatever, dry wagers, and then distributing it to, to local restaurants, there's really nothing in there that, that would could really classify that, that I could consider. And I think the cleanest way to do it would be to amend the ordinance to include breweries as a land use that's permitted either by right or by special use and probably C2, C3, probably mixed use. And so I guess one of the questions I've had for you guys is if you thought it should be by right or by special use. And then talk a little bit about what districts it should be in and things like that. And then I could provide a, a, the language for the text amendment for, text amendment we could hold a hearing at the December meeting and make a recommendation to council.
Is there an precedent for allowing that by right?
Um, not that I'm aware of here. I mean, there are certainly, it kind of depends on the nature of the use. Some places, one of my clients, they deal with restaurants serving alcohol differently from restaurants that don't serve alcohol. So I've got one if, if you either have a drive-through or if they serve alcohol and that's considered special use. And if it's a restaurant, it doesn't, then it's permitted by right. That's one way to do it. Others just deal with, others just ignore it and just call it a restaurant, which, and I think in the case if it's going to be a brew pub where most of those are, there's a restaurant involved and they just happen to sell their own beer, not, is not quite as concerned about that one because I think it's certainly close enough to a, to a restaurant and it fits the definition in the zoning ordinance or in the dictionary of a restaurant. But somebody that's just brewing beer, tagging it and then trucking it to some other location is a bit different. I don't, there's not really any ordinance to address that.
But generally that's what happens. I mean, if you're successful, you end up selling it elsewhere too.
Yeah, or there's some combination of that. I mean, like, you know, founders and places like that in GR. Yeah, they, they, they have a full blown restaurant, they've got a bar, they've got that, but then they're obviously spottling and distributing a ton of it all over the country in their case.
So we should probably be prepared for that just to head this off so we don't have to abandon again, right?
Well, maybe. I mean, something like that would be a pretty large operation, but yeah, there's certainly, that's something that we should definitely consider when we write this is that think about something that's could be, you know, mostly or predominantly distribution and that kind of stuff more so than, than the retail sales and restaurant side of it for sure.
So do you need a liquor license to brew it or?
I know there's a brew pub liquor license of some sort. I don't, I don't know how they don't work. I know that there is a liquor license you need for a brew pub or a brew pub license or something like that.
Especially if you're selling and everything, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And then I think it's all different for on-premise consumption versus off-premise and all that kind of stuff. And if you're also selling liquor in addition to your, I mean, if you have a full bar and you're selling your own beer plus you're selling liquor in line and everything else, then that, I don't, I don't know all the layers of how that works, but yes, there would be a special license of some sort.
That'd be a significant drop, I would think, to the area with a brew pub. You know, those are really popular these days, so.
I hadn't heard of that.
Right, especially in here.
Well, and for restaurants too, I mean, if there is, if, if they're selling something that is, I mean, if there's somebody locally that's making it and only selling it to restaurants, they're selling it primarily to restaurants, it could be a draw for those restaurants if people really like it better. People want to go there to get that specific product. It might be harder to get at retail.
Sure.
So I don't know if you guys, my primary question was for you guys was, do you think it should be a special land use sort of decision where there's a public hearing that comes in front of you guys? There are a little bit higher standards to meet. Thought that also mean a little bit more time to get it done. Or alternatively, if it was a permitted use by right, then that's something that theoretically could be approved administratively for certain things. If someone was going to reuse an existing building, do it then that wouldn't even come in front of you guys at all necessarily, even probably just get taken care of administratively.
Well, if the use was going to be different, I think it would come before then, wouldn't it?
If they're not making any changes to the building, probably not. Cause when we did that amendment recently for slave minor use and stuff, I mean, if they're.
Keeping the building same and if it's a used permit.
Exactly. If, if the building's not being touched and if it's used by right, then.
So this would be in superior, the superior building, there would be, you can do that administratively is what you're saying?
Potentially. If it were permitted by right, then yeah, maybe. I mean, there's always, the city sort of reserved the right to refer things to the planning commission in special instances and depending on what they're proposing, it could be that you end up looking at it anyways, but maybe not.
What are the other things by right? Restaurant, right?
Yeah, so if we're talking about.
So we're talking about just adding brew pub as opposed to, or brewery as opposed to restaurant or?
Yeah. So we have like in C3 and I think in C2, we have as a use by right in most districts, restaurant exclusive of drive-through facilities, that's just a use by right. Brewing is not really mentioned anywhere in the whole thing. So in this case specifically, what we would do would be, we'd write out a, a definition for a brewery or maybe brewery slash winery or I don't know, something that's fairly, yeah, somewhat broad. And then make some suggestions, I guess, as far as what districts it should be located in, if it's by right or by special use and those kinds of things.
I'll throw out there for you that it doesn't, one of the reasons why we brought that amendment to you before was to be able to fast track those things that were fairly common in nature. This is going to feel like one of those common ones. It just feels more like one of those that might be better off in special use.
Special use?
Yeah. And that was like thinking behind the.
Yeah, directors get special use. I mean, it's not, they're not limiting it anyway. It's just more of standards. Yeah. Can, can you write that up and let us see it?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? All right. Staff reports? Got the pages in the bag?
Pages are there. The only thing we would point out is that the harbor board put together some recommendations for tree plan relating to spacing and things like that. And they wanted to make sure that you saw those and were maybe thinking about that as you do with second use there for your homes. That's been included in your package as well.
Is this a normal guideline for, for all residential plots or commercial lots or does it just say general guideline?
How do you do this?
I, I believe.
I, I believe Melissa Spino, she gathered this stuff together and she is master gardener and she got these tips from the website shown on this page.
And, and most of what they deal with is planting trees in public spaces. And, and so I think these guidelines are mostly for those public spaces, but quite often you'll get a, you'll get a site plan where they'll talk about, you know, a commute mine is a builder's hard place where you have trees that are planted along the sidewalk because I'm assuming in the public space, but pretty, pretty close to it, pretty, pretty visible and, and so, you know, at least if you know what the guidelines are for public spaces as, as you're reviewing the site plan, then they talk, that would be helpful.
Okay. Moving on to remarks.
I have nothing to add, but thanks.
I'm good.
No remarks?
All right.
I'll finish then, John.
I would accept that. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those for yes?
Yes.
Any no's? Any sayings? We are adjourned at 7:51.